At this time, we're called a regular meeting in the New Ulm City Council for September 5th, 2017, 4:30 PM to order. First item on the agenda is your consent agenda items. What's your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. Any discussion on any? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 2A, consider a motion approving the issuance of a lawful gambling permit for the New Ulm Sotoma Club to conduct raffle gambling at the New Ulm Country Club, and that's for January 24th, 2018.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 2B, consider a motion approving the issuance of a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for State Street Theater Company, and that's for November 11th, 2017.
I'll offer a motion for that.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 2C, consider a motion approving the issuance of taxi license, vehicle transfer from New Ulm Taxi LLC.
Motion to approve.
Pardon?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 2D, consider a motion approving the issuance of the transfer of the bread and breakfast license due to a ownership change.
I'll offer that motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Welcome to our community and thank you to Gary and Ramona for all their years. I was kind of surprised they left quick.
Yeah.
Great facility.
I think it was for sale for a while, but...
Any more discussion?
They're not here though, are they?
Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 2A, number one, consider a resolution approving the conditions with, conditions, the request from Dwayne and Angie Wendler for a simple lot division of the property located at 1921 Allison Avenue.
I would just like to add the planning commissioner recommended approval. Don't see any issues. No neighbors are concerned with it. It's just each, it's a simple lot division and each lot's going to get a little bit bigger so, to accommodate another house being built.
With that being said, I'll offer a resolution, waive the reading, approving the conditions, request of Dwayne and Angie Wendler for a simple lot division of the property located at 1921 Allison Avenue.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, off the resolution, waived the reading. Any more discussion? Seeing none. Finance Director, please call the roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 3B, number one, consider a request from Al Paylor on behalf of S&amp;P Development LLC for a variance from the city code to allow twin and row homes to be constructed on the property generally described as part of Lot 1, Block 2, 5th Street North, 5th Street 1st Edition, to be plotted as part of the Milford Heights 2nd Edition.
And I'd like to add the Board of Zoning and Adjustment recommended approval at the August 31st meeting, and no other concerns from the neighbors or no written letters or calls on it.
Okay. Anything else?
So with that, I'll offer a motion to approve with conditions, on behalf of Al Paylor and S&amp;P Development LLC for variances for the city code to allow twin and row homes to be constructed on property generally described as part of Lot 1, Block 2, 5th Street 1st Edition to be plotted as part of Milford Heights 2nd Edition.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 4A, consider a recommendation to amend Section 8.21 of the city code relative to animals at city property modifying the dog and cat leash law, reinstating leash law in parks. Tom?
Tom Schmitz, Park and Recreation Department. President Schmitz, councilors, this is simply a request to come back to you to reinstate the leash law in parks. It was taken out of parks and put on the trail in 2004. And you have a little more information in the packet. We did a little research with pure market groups and found that Mankato, Owatonna, Wilmer, Fairmont, North Mankato, Hutchinson, Albert Lee, and St. Peter have leash laws in parks. The only one that we found in our pure market group without that is Fairbolt.
Tom, did some of them have some parks with leash laws and some without?
Yes, and some of them have off-leash parks like we do now.
Right, with the dog park, but...
Right. You know, and this was not brought to the council until we developed an off-leash dog park. I know we have at least one citizen here that is interested in speaking to this also. If Penny is interested in coming forth?
Go first.
Penny Pertser, 323 South Broadway. Some months ago, when the city council was talking about reinstating the leash law, Counselor Fisher made the observation that dogs are animals and as such unpredictable. This would be reason enough for dogs to be walked on leash, certainly in a park where people should feel comfortable and safe with dogs or without dogs walking just casually by themselves. The other contention, I think, was the length of the leash, and it should be a six-foot leash. That's a standard AKC-approved length, and I might add, not the expandable leashes, which are a menace. People don't know how to use them. The dog runs this way, the dog runs that way, the dog runs around somebody's legs. They are totally worthless and a menace. So I'm advocating for dogs on leash in city parks. We have a dog park now where dogs can run and play freely and happily, and citizens can feel comfortable in knowing that whether the dog is confined in, in the dog park or walking on the leash along the trail, people are safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard?
I guess I'll just make a comment. I guess I'm not really in favor of a leash law. It just, I don't, I'm not saying things can happen, but are we creating something that might, that really rarely happens that somebody gets bit? I don't know, our city attorney would have a better idea how many times somebody has gotten bit, but I think our law enforcement has more to do than walk through parks and see how long the leash is. I just personally not in favor of it.
Mr. President, a couple of points. I just noticed this was on the agenda when I reviewed the agenda over the weekend. Last week, I was contacted by Keith Anderson, who's the Animal Control Officer for the City of New Ulm, and he expressed to me that he had real concerns that the council had not taken action to clarify or otherwise impose a leash requirement. He's the guy who deals with the reports. He sees there being a problem. He's not here tonight. I wish, you know, we would've gotten notice to him. I think he would've been the best spokesman to let the council know what concerns he sees in his job. As I previously mentioned, when this was on the agenda the last time, we have existing language, notwithstanding the fact that the leash requirement was removed from city parks when we went to the trails. In the city of New Ulm, a dog must be on a leash or under the direct control of an owner. And I think everybody here can have a different idea of what direct control means. Quite frankly, to me, it means the owner has got the hand on the dog's collar. Direct control is not that you're anticipating that your dog is going to respond to your command to stop or to halt or something like that. Many dogs do, a lot of dogs don't. Now, a judge, a jury, another prosecutor, a law enforcement officer might read this direct control language differently. To me, it is vague, but I think that's the only way you can really have direct control. So, an argument can be made, we already have this requirement in New Ulm. This would help to clarify it for dog owners. I understand the reasoning that Tom has brought forward, but I am also unclear if you're just asking for a leash requirement in city parks or if you want the citywide or...
The request is just back in city parks.
Right. Well, if, perhaps the council would want to table this until Officer Anderson could have some input on it.
I guess I have a question for Tom. So how many complaints or how many complaints have we had within parks? Do you track, have you tracked that? How many complaints of animals running off leash?
Counselor Fisher's, Fisher, we have not, we don't track that information in that data that comes forth, and I think many incidents happen that don't get reported to our office. I don't know how many get reported to the LAC, Law Enforcement.
So we're speculating that there's many incidents that are happening, but we don't have reports.
Anecdotally, we've heard over the years that people are concerned and upset, park users are, that there's off-leash dogs running around Harmon Park or North Park or various locations. And we haven't brought it to the council until we've got a designated off-leash dog park, which we do now. Another option for the council to consider would be if you're looking for a larger area to run your dog than our existing dog park, you may decide to allow off-leash in some maybe undeveloped parks or lesser-used parks. As opposed to, you know, letting them run off-leash at Harmon Park, Herman Heights, North, German, number of our heavily-used parks that have children and families and picnics and...
I guess my opinion is still, we need to do more research on it. I think we need to just table the thing until we get some documentation to show if there is a problem. Just because a dog runs loose in a park doesn't mean he's a danger. There's a lot of friendly dogs out there. When I go walking by myself, dogs run up to me too. I don't know why, but it's just...
I kind of look like a furrier.
I know. I mean, it doesn't mean, and some people will jump when a dog runs up to you, you know, where, I'm not scared of a dog, but, I don't know. I just put something in just because, I don't know, not, I'm not for that.
I guess I'm not convinced yet that there's a real problem. I think we have, there might be a problem with maybe the wording of if you're having trouble prosecuting, you know, the leash law, you know, then on our streets, you know, maybe that needs to be defined better. You said the leash law is there for our streets, but it's not in our parks.
Well, it says that, excuse me, Mr. President, Counselor, it says that the animal must be on a leash or under the direct control of the owner. If a dog is running within 10 feet of the owner, what is your interpretation of direct control?
Right. And I'm saying that maybe we need to modify that language so that, but there's two different issues. It's the leash law in the parks and then the wording of the ordinance for the city.
The case is, the case is, we've seen people, people are getting bit outside of the parks. I mean, I don't know, we've had...
And there's a leash law, so obviously that...
Well, there says leash or direct control, so...
What you saying, is the same law applies to parks and anywhere in the city?
It was, it's correct, but if there was just a requirement that the dog be on a leash, presumably there aren't going to be dogs running at large.
President Schmitz and councilors, another option is to just remove the last 10 words of Section 8.21 of the code, page 61 of your packet, and those are the 10 words that say, "or otherwise under the direct control of an accompanying person."
But then you're getting right back, you're putting the dog on a leash.
Well, that would mean leash law everywhere.
Well, yeah, but I don't think, I guess I'm not interested in reinstating the leash law in the parks. And right now, the way it stands, it sounds like we have a leash law or a control, dog control law, any place else within the city.
Including the parks, correct?
Including the parks.
But the park doesn't have a leash law.
It's part of the city.
They were exempt.
No, no. This, this doesn't exempt parks, anywhere in the city of New Ulm.
Except the dog park.
Except the dog park, correct. The dog needs to be on leash or under the direct control of the owner.
Okay, then I'm confused, because what did they do in 2004?
They took, the city council took the leash law out of parks and put it on the trail.
Right. Out of parks, so they were free to be off-leash in parks.
No, the, the difference was, I think, that that, if you still have that old language, it said that they had to be on leash, period. Now, the general rule that applies throughout the entire city, including the parks, is on leash or under the direct control of an owner.
Back to Tom, what about the trail?
Well, page, showing 63 of your packet, former subdivision 14 was the leash law Actually, it's not that number, it's 63 of the packet?
No, it's, it says, "It's unlawful," this is the old language, "for any person who owns or has control of any cat or dog to allow or permit the same to enter any city park unless such dog or cat is on a leash and attended by the owner."
And, yes. So in '04, there was a leash law up until October of '04 in parks, and that's what all of the green signs you see, metal signs at parks now. Those are signs from pre-2004, because they still have the 2004, 2003 language on them, which is a leash law in city parks. We haven't erased that sentence off of the rule sign. But it was taken out of parks and put on the trail by the council in '04.
But how can we take it out of the park when it's a city chart, code? That, I know what you're saying, but I guess I'm lost with Lisa now.
Yeah.
It's just... Well, it's fairly clear. I think the, the park ordinance that was changed said the dog had to be on leash, period.
Oh, now we just said "or" control now.
Now, it says, now, because parks are in the city of New Ulm, now it comes under the general requirement, which is they have to be on leash or under the direct control of the owner, whatever that means.
I think we still got to take, tear it all apart and start over, because you just can't have one word. You're saying your opinion of direct control versus my opinion of direct control are two different things.
I think everybody can have, I don't, still don't know, you know, what other councilors might think direct control means. Could all have different opinions on that.
I think we need to spell it out in writing and research a little more.
So is that something, Roger, you could do? Come up with some different alternatives, not just leash, but different words?
Yeah, but sure I could, but I'd really like to know what you want, because again, to me, the simplest answer is dogs have got a collar, you got your hand on the collar, you've got direct control. Anything other than that, what is direct control?
Maybe that's the definition we're looking for, hand on the collar or...
It's kind of hard if you, if you've got a little duck's lung.
I think we need to take a look.
That's true.
I think we need to take a look as a council also, you know, we have a lot of people in the community that hunt and like to train their dogs and run their dogs. And maybe like Mr. Schmitz recommended, you know, we have some undeveloped parks, or if we could define a couple of them and...
Or parks that aren't used that much.
Look, look at those and say, this is where you can run your dog in that capacity. Even though we have a dog park you can run in, but I mean, if you're going to do some sort of training or to let them run, this is where you're going to do it under some type of...
But then you're going to run it...
Under some type of control. I don't know. I mean, maybe you have an exception.
But then you can run it in my park, but not yours. And we're, I think we're looking for a bag of worms there too.
How come it says then we're reinstating the leash law in parks? It says on the, on the thing that that's what we're here for, is we're supposed to be reinstating the leash law. That's what they're asking. But you're saying there is a leash law in parks already?
What I'm saying is that the Section 8.21 applies to the city of New Ulm.
Right.
Which includes parks. And that says that an owner can do one of two things. You either have the dog on a leash or you have it under your direct control.
See, now a shock collar could be under your control.
Okay, maybe this, no, I don't think that'd be direct. My dog did a lot of things with a shock collar that I didn't want him to do. Maybe this, this is helpful. We have a general section that applies to everywhere. Leash or under direct control. And then you have specific regulations for parks and for trails. And back a few years ago, they swapped out the you have to have a leash in a park to you have to have a leash on recreational trails. So then parks went to the general regulation, not the more specific regulation. So by reinstating that animals on recreation trails and city parks, subdivision 14 would only allow dogs on leash, period. It doesn't have to be under control, other control. So it's becoming more, the hierarchy of laws, general law covers the whole city, specific law, right to trails or parks, is what we're really talking about. The second question would be what the city attorney brought up, and that was, what does the, what do those terms mean even for the rest of the community? Okay, so, there's two things going on here. One is specifically for parks. Two would be, what do those words mean in front of your house, in front of my house, even on the city street? What does that mean? But I, I guess I do like the idea of maybe going back and having a, some analysis done on which parks might be more prone to frisbee with your dog and which parks you wouldn't want frisbee with your dog. Because I can tell you that if you're pushing a stroller with a small child and a relatively large dog is running around, it's going to be of concern. Maybe not to, you know, Council President Schmitz here, but to that mom or dad with a child at 20 inches off the ground, a 30-inch dog is, is of concern.
Pretty scary.
So, there may be locations where you say we don't want loose-running dogs, and there may be areas that would be acceptable. So maybe Mr. Schmitz can go back and kind of look at this and see if there's a, a plan that can be put in place to say, here's acceptable, here's not, and at the same time, we can bring the Animal Control Officer in and he can give his report on what he's seen and go from there.
But if all the, if all the signage is still there, do you think a word change is really going to make a difference? I mean, if all the signage is still there, that they have to be on a leash? I mean, now we're just talking about basically a word change in the ordinance and...
Well, the police aren't going to be enforcing the signs as they sit right now. They're just not going to enforce it, because the general rule is leash or under control. And we need to define what is under control.
I'm going to give my two cents worth. The last time that this came about, the most phone calls I got was from concerned citizens and parents who had small children, and also daycares had gotten a hold of me. Some, not dog trainers, but dog owners who do train their dogs for hunting, or such not, can't you find us a place to do this? I mean, I guess when it comes to a, the citizen, the dog trainer, or the dog itself, I had an interesting phone call this afternoon, did we build the parks for city dogs or city residents? Who's taking precedence? I mean, what we're looking at is, you know, are we going to let the dogs run free or whatnot? I guess if I was, at my, in years past, if I had a little child at the daycare and I found out some person did not have control of their 65-pound Rattweiler or Bulldog, came running up, scared the pajibis out of the child, I'm probably going to lean towards, okay, maybe we need to go back to that original, only in the city parks, leave the rest alone. Okay, it's got to be under control of the owner. I mean, I understand what Counselor Fisher is saying. I've seen some of the best dogs out there, when they see another dog, that owner completely loses control. I witnessed that at the dog park. I witnessed that. So, that's my two cents on it. Who do we have the parks for? Our kids and senior citizens, we as adults, or do we curtail our ordinance to fit the dogs in the parks? That's my opinion.
But I'll tell you, there's a lot of people out there in the city that that dog is their kid, and they want to do whatever they can with it.
I guess I, I don't have a problem with, I don't really have a large problem with leashes, I just don't know how much of a problem there is. I guess if we had, you know, have we prosecuted anybody for not having their dog under control or what, how often is this?
A dog was put down last week, who would repeatedly bit children and adults, so it happens.
Right. So we've had one incident, is that what's driving this? Did we have a problem prosecuting or...
No, there wasn't a problem prosecuting. A person didn't have a defense attorney. Perhaps if they would've, they would've caught on to the ambiguity in the statute. It's, it's something where, and I've seen the photos of the children with the bites and the tears and lacerations, and, you know, families probably don't want to share that with the council, but when it happens to someone near and dear to you, it's a real concern, so...
President Schmitz and councilors, a few parks, I would say lesser-developed or undeveloped parks that you have available to yourselves. One of them, of course, is up on the hill, and I'm not going to be recommending that as an off-leash dog area, Fender Park. But Lower Riverside Park is an option, it's kind of a wilderness area, especially if you're training, you know, waterfowl dogs. The dormant soccer field, down, down near the Artwall Park, basically a big soccer field that is dormant. It's a great place that could be utilized as a dog training ground, an off-leash area that's bigger than the fenced-in dog park. So there's, there's a few ideas. South Park is a lesser-developed park, but you've got frisbees flying around there with the disc golf course, nice playground and a ball field. South German Park, where the dog park is, you could go north of the dog park to Third South as an off-leash area possibly, that's, doesn't have a playground and a picnic area children's and, children and family utilizing.
Mr. President, I'm going to offer a motion to table this action for additional information from our city attorney as far as language potential options, and just if he can get, get us a list and we'll take a look at it, Roger, if that'll work. Maybe some options as you were just talking about, I'd like to hear that. And I know our Animal Control Officer does a lot with runaway dogs and dogs on off-leash, but I don't know if that's going to help answer our questions, but I'd like to hear from him, so... And if, I think you probably want to run that through your Park and Rec Commission anyway, don't you?
The Park Commission has already requested you reinstate the leash law in city parks.
I know, and we're saying maybe not, give us some options, other options.
We could certainly do that.
Do you have a second? We have a motion and a second to table it for more information. Have the city attorney look into it. Any more discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 5A, consider a resolution often the closure of the alley adjacent to the B&amp;L Bar Building, 15 North Minnesota Street, for the extension of a liquor license into the closed alley area for October 15th. closed alley area for Oktoberfest celebrations, and that's for October seventh and fourteenth, and eighth, and fif- no, no, fifteenth, yes.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to offer resolution, waive reading, any more discussion? See a nun? Finance director, please call a roll.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item five B, consider request from the Green Mill Best Western Plus two thousand, or twenty-one oh one South Broadway to authorize the extension of established liquor license to the parking lot for second annual Rock Fest, Oktoberfest, and outside event during the weekends of Oktoberfest, and schedule a public hearing for noise variance to allow live bands to perform in the parking lot for their event.
I'll offer a motion, or offer the resolution, waive the reading for the first one we need to do, which is the extend the liquor license to the parking lot.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to offer resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion? See a nun? Finance director, please call a roll.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries.
Second one, our motion is scheduled public hearing for Tuesday, September nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, at four thirty P M for request for noise variance to permit amplified music and parking lot adjacent to Green Mill and Best Western Plus during the following dates of the second annual Rocktoberfest, Oktoberfest. You want me to run into the record or the dates?
I, okay, I think it's Fisher.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion? See a nun? All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose no, motion carries. Item five C, consider resolution accepting donations and memorials to the New Ulm Public Library.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to offer resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion? See a nun? All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose no, I'm sorry, finance director, please call a roll.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item five D, consider resolution accept donations of the bench for the placement of the New Ulm Public Library.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to offer resolution, waive the reading, and that's the bench that's gonna be moved from putting green over to the library. No more discussion? Finance director, please call a roll.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item five E, consider motion to establish two most east, or northeasterly parking lot, or spots in the city parking lot located at one twenty-seven North German Street for an electric vehicle only recharging parking spots and exempt from the time limit of overtime parking restrictions. Patrick?
Good afternoon, City Council. At the August twenty-second meeting of the Public Utilities, the commission approved of the purchase of an electrical vehicle charging station device, and we're intending to install that, as you stated, at one twenty-seven North German. This will provide for two charging ports, and it's a level-two charger, which really means it's a two-hundred-and-forty volt installation. It'll charge a typical electric vehicle, and the typical right now is a hundred mile range, in about four hours of time. So we've, we've examined the downtown area, we'd like to keep it close to the downtown area. And the location we've come up with is that very northeast corner of the parking lot at one twenty-seven North German. We feel it has a nice proximity to downtown, it does close to the Public Utilities Building, and also to help with expense, we have a transformer located less than a hundred and fifty feet away. So that'll, that'll aid in reducing the cost for this installation. We have selected a piece of equipment manufactured by the company ChargePoint, and we purchased it off the state bid. They will add that location if it's approved to their, their network, so it'll be available to users of the internet and owners of electric vehicles, so it'll be a spot on the map for, for charging in New Ulm. And we, we're, we're kind of out in a, in a area without any stations out here. So the closest stations to us are Mankato, they have a number of them over there, including some of the DC Fast Chargers. Other cities that have a, more of a level-two type charger here would be Hutchinson and Saint Peter. So we're hopeful that by installing this equipment, we won't be avoided by drivers of electric vehicles as a destination point here in New Ulm, and hopefully will generate some more trips to New Ulm by those same drivers. So with the approval tonight, our electric department is planning to start installation procedures as soon as tomorrow, get it ready as soon as possible, ideally in time for the Oktoberfest celebration, and also our Public Power Week that comes up in the beginning of October.
Thank you. Do we have people that are asking for this in town, right now?
We haven't had any specific requests from residents in New Ulm, but we have noticed among staff people that there are a, a few resident electric vehicles, and, and that's fully electric vehicle, no onboard gasoline engine. So there are some pure electric vehicles in town right now. And, you know, we're expecting the numbers to increase, the technology is continually improving, the affordable, long, we call them medium-range electric vehicles, the Chevy Bolt, the Tesla Model Three that are in that thirty to thirty-five thousand dollar range, and, and have a, a driving range of over two-hundred-and-fifty miles are, are now available. So we're expecting these things to become more prevalent on a cost-per-mile basis. They compete and actually beat the cost of the most efficient gasoline and diesel-powered vehicles.
Right.
Mr. Rossi, could you explain the, the three levels?
Sure. So the three levels, level one, it's typical, the charging station that you'd have in your home, and it's a hundred-and-twenty volt, so it's same voltage as the outlets in your home. The level two is, doubles that to two-forty, and as a result decreases the charging time quite significantly. And then the state of the art right now is the, the DC Fast Chargers. So in comparison to the capacity of these different charging units, this level-two unit that we're going to be putting in will provide seven-point-two kilowatts of power to the vehicle being charged. The DC Fast Chargers, they're about fifty-two kilowatts. So a DC Fast Charger can charge that hundred mile range in thirty minutes. For us, it's gonna take about four hours. And overnight in your garage with a level one, takes you eight hours to get a full charge.
So will these two stalls then be empty during the day? Because it won't, you won't be able
They will be restricted to electrical vehicles, so.
That would be charging.
That would be charging, right?
That would be charging.
So if there's no electric vehicles in the area looking to be recharged, it would be empty.
And we can afford to have an empty spots in that lot? That's, you okay with that?
The, the spots that are, have been identified are not leased parking.
Right, right.
And any one point in time at any one point in time, you can go there and there's empty, empty spot. So it's not that, that people can't find parking if they're in that general area.
I think it's a good thing, it's the only way we can get electric vehicles in town if we promote it, so.
Right.
You have to have a place to do it.
I'll go to Mankato.
Any more discussion? Anybody have questions for Patrick?
Will that machine tell you how many times it's been used? I mean, will you?
It will. As, as part of the purchase, we will receive a subscription to the ChargePoint Network as well, and provide us detailed information about the frequency of use, so.
Pat, maybe you want to talk about how it gets charged out, just?
Or you, you're referring to the, the price pricing?
The user, yeah.
Sure. So we're, we're anticipating a charging rate of about a dollar per hour. For the first hour, we're gonna charge an extra dollar, so the first hour will charge two dollars, and that extra dollar is a facility charge to help recover the investment in the equipment. The dollar per hour ends up being about fifteen cents per kilowatt hour. That compares to about thirteen cents for our typical residential use. So we'll keep the rate low for about four hours, a dollar an hour. But we want to make sure that, that device is available if another charging car comes to town. So after four hours, you get your hundred miles of range, we're gonna start to step up the hourly rate. It's gonna increase exponentially to get people to move out and on and make room for another visitor that may need to take advantage of the charge.
Can I be the devil's advocate, does it have to be a car?
What if I was driving down the Minnesota River with my boat and the battery went dead and I took it up there and plugged them in?
As long as you've got the proper receptacle.
Any more discussion? Interesting motion?
I'll offer the motion to establish the two most northeastern parking spots in the municipal parking lot located at one twenty-seven North German Street as electric vehicle only recharging parking spots, and exempt them from limited or overtime parking restrictions.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion? See a nun? All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose no, motion carries. Item five F, consider motion to contract short Elliott Hendrickson Incorporated to provide engineering design services for utility improvements on Twentieth North Street and Front Street area. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. President. We're asking for authorization to hire a consulting firm to provide the plans and specifications for sanitary sewer main, water main extension, as well as a sanitary lift station, which is kind of a specialized situation. Attached to the request for council action form is a map of the general area that's located at Twentieth North and Front Street. It's about fifteen acres of developable land, there has been some development happening there. But there's no sanitary sewer and water main available at that location. And we've been, the city staff and the P U C staff have been working together to try and figure out some way to at least provide, you know, water, fire protection and a sanitary sewer at that location. The P U C has signed on to basically fund this particular project with some bonding money, and they would be reimbursing the city for the engineering services. Eventually, hopefully, they would recover their costs or a portion of it by establishing connection charges. So that would be part of the feasibility study that we're asking this firm to provide for us.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion? See a nun? All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose no, motion carries. Item five G, consider resolution accepting anticipated grant offer from the Federal Aviation Administration to prepare airport master plan study and update airport layout plans.
Mr. President, this is something that the Airport Commission has previously recommended that the airport master plan and layout plan be updated. The original plan, or the last master plan, was from nineteen seventy-six, which is, you know, forty, forty-one years old right now, and things have changed quite significantly with regard to aviation and the rules and regulations. We've been working with the regional FAA office in Minneapolis, as well as the Office of Aeronautics in Saint Paul, and come up with a scope of work that would satisfy their requirements, as well as provide us a new plan. We did receive the offer this afternoon, I had to write it kind of vaguely because it had to go through a Washington process, and they have offered the grant as laid out, they'll pay ninety-five percent of the anticipated cost, so of the two-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand dollar estimate, the, the city would be tasked with just under fifteen thousand, which I've included in the airport budget. So we do have that grant offer, it is a really, rather timely situation, so if you have any other questions, I can hopefully ask, answer them.
Anybody have any questions for Steve?
With that being said, I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, accepting and anticipating grant offer from the Federal Aviation Administration to prepare airport master plan study and update airport layout plan and related expenses, and authorize the city manager and city attorney to execute the agreement for and in behalf of the city in New Ulm.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second to offer resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion? See a nun? Finance director, please call a roll.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item five H, consider resolution approving the MinDOT Office of Aeronautics Grant Contract Number one zero two eight nine seven eight for the airport maintenance operations. Mr. Kayler?
Mr. President, this is the final airport issue this evening. This is a two-year grant agreement that reimburses the city for three-quarters of the eligible routine, routine maintenance costs at the airport, like mowing grass, things, things of that nature, up to approximately fifty thousand dollars. It's pretty standard, they run a two-year fiscal year, which we've spelled out in there, but we've been able to take advantage of a significant reimbursement on a yearly basis. So we recommend approval.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to offer resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion? See a nun? Finance director, please call a roll.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item five I, consider allowing the New Ulm Baseball Association to operate an advertising program in the Johnson and Miller Parks.
Tom Schmitz, Park and Recreation Department, President Schmitz, councillors, you have before you a request from the New Ulm Baseball Association, and their president, Bob Skillings, is here today. The request is to operate an advertising program at Johnson Park and Miller Park. And I think, you know, you have the information before you here in the packet. They are requesting a sixty percent, forty percent split, where the association would keep sixty percent of the revenue and the city would keep forty percent of the revenue. The association will do all the work, provide materials, parts, labor, installation, and my understanding is the city will need to provide zero assistance or labor, parts and material. So maybe you want to ask Mr. Skillings to come up and?
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Skillings?
My question's for you, Tom, where, where are you anticipating that this revenue ending up at?
This revenue would go into the Parks Division and be utilized for maintenance functions at Johnson and Miller Park.
So become a newer line item if this is approved next year?
Well, hopefully it will be some new revenue, of course, that's all dependent upon their sales.
True, true.
When they begin the program, and so on and so forth.
I think it's a great idea, I, I don't see any concerns on my end, but.
Any more discussion?
I don't have any concerns, I don't know if Roger would have any.
Oh, well, Mr. President, I just, I wasn't aware, I haven't spoken to Mr. Schmitz about this proposal. As he notes, we do have a similar agreement in place with the New Ulm Steel Hockey Team for the arena. I think when we negotiated that, part of the concerns was maintaining control over the content of the ads, maintaining some control over the physical component of the advertising. And although I appreciate the Baseball Association offering to provide the materials and labor, those are things we may need to be discussing in more detail as far as.
Yes, President Schmitz, councillors, Attorney Hippert, item three in the overview denotes that a legal agreement will need to be consummated for all the details.
Right, but just so everyone's aware of that, those are things that we've already got in place at the arena, and we've probably got the same kind of concerns here, but those are details we can work out, so.
Tom, I have a question. I guess I don't, not seeing it here, but did they talk about where they want to put the advertising? Did I miss that? Do you know where they want it?
My understanding is the outfield fence at Miller Park, but not the outfield fence at Johnson because of the ivy, and then miscellaneous other areas within the facilities.
Because I'm just concerned about Johnson Park, basically, because it is so Because I'm just concerned about Johnson Park, basically, because it is so historic and I would hate to see signage all over the back. It's a beautiful park and I...
In response to Counselor Fisher's concern, I was at the Park and Rec meeting, and that was discussed about we leave the outfield at Johnson Park alone and the ice picket fencing, we've got the ivy growing in. I think most of the discussion, and Mr. Skilings might want to comment on it, was maybe after the ballpark is, it's going to be redone soon, I hope. Just on the upper part, where the fencing and that is now, not impacting the outfield or the side at all. But I'll let Mr. Skilings comment on that.
Thank you, Counselor Christian. Yeah, our concern with Johnson Park, we need to maintain, you know, its historic charm and so forth. So our main emphasis would probably be Miller Park in terms of the advertising, but there are places in Johnson Park, like the back of the grandstand and places like that, where there could be some advertising. And I, we would probably, or we would, any proposed advertising in the parks, we would go to the Park and Rec Commission for their approval. I would think that would be in the agreement.
Absolutely. Mr. Skilings, and Colin, you raise a valid point here, but that's the kind of language where the city ultimately would control the location, the dimensions, all of those things. And I'm sure as the proposals came forward, they would be reviewed by Tom and Park and Rec, and if there was an issue, it's under the city control, and if the council was upset with the way some of this appeared, it's ultimately coming back to you. But those are the sorts of things we'd want to have in the agreement.
Roger, currently, do we have a limit as to how many advertising spaces we have at the arena?
We've got a limit on where they're located, and we have a limit on the type of materials that they can be put on. But beyond that, I don't know if there's a dimension limit on them.
Any more questions?
With that being said, I'll instruct the city attorney to prepare an agreement allowing the New Ulm Baseball Association to operate an advertising program in Johnson and Mueller Parks, and we want the 60, 40 in that motion?
Yeah, I would.
And also allowing the New Ulm Baseball to keep 60% of the proceeds, and the other 40 goes to the city of New Ulm.
I'll second it.
We got a motion, a second. Any more discussion? See none? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes no. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 5J, consider funding of the New Ulm Economic Development Corporation for fiscal year 2018. As you're probably all aware, when we had our budget discussion a month or so ago, this was one of the topics that we discussed, and I guess we're here tonight to make a decision whether we want to go forward with that decision or make some changes to it. You have anything you want to add to that, Brian, or?
Well, the overview is on the issue sheet, and for the benefit of the audience out there, that the city of New Ulm and the Public Utility Commission fund the New Ulm Economic Development Corporation about $50,000 each by Minnesota Statute 469.191. It sets the maximum amount of $50,000 that the city can fund. And the question that was brought up last year and was in the process of being discussed and to come to some resolution was whether or not the New Ulm Public Utility Commission, even though they are a separate entity, would still be considered not the city, so that they could also put in $50,000 for $100,000 total. That question hasn't been, you know, quite solved yet. Initially, it looks like there's no specific statutory language that allows the Public Utility Commission to do that, but more work may be needed to be done on that to come up with the city attorney's position of yes or no. All right. New Ulm EDC has historically performed a task of economic development outreach and has worked with the city in the past on projects, you know, development of industrial park, getting the paperwork done for loans. The city has provided revolving loans to businesses that the EDC has worked with those businesses to attain. EDC has also developed land, constructed buildings for lease to own or rent to a business that was coming to New Ulm or for a business that was expanding in New Ulm. And up to recently, the shift of the city performing more of the financial aspect of it, buying of the land and developing of the industrial park going into the future, has shifted to the city and away from the EDC. And there has been some discussion at the last work session about is there a way we could still do the same activities and, you know, operate the city in a more effective manner? And what you have before you is, again, the history, the finances are about, well, about, they are $100,000 per year, and that would be going forward if we continued on with the same funding structure. And what you have before you is, you know, to retain the funding structure as currently provided or to change the funding.
Mr. President, if I just may briefly touch upon what Mr. Grammets was saying. Assistant City Attorney Borgan is the one who primarily works with the PUC, and he's done the research as far as the question of their continued funding. I think there are some concerns that he has on whether or not the PUC can do that. I'm not sure when the commission is going to consider it, but I think one of the things that you should have in mind is we are capped at $50,000 as far as what the city of New Ulm can do. And I don't know what happens if the PUC terminates their 50, what that's going to mean for the EDC and their budget. If there's only 50,000, that would be against the city of New Ulm. So again, I'm not sure when they're going to consider that, but it's just something that you should, I don't know what their decision will be, but it's something you should have in mind.
Thank you, Roger. I guess where this originally started is, it's a subject that's been on my mind for the last five, six years already. I've talked to Brian several times about it, and I think what really triggered my idea was when we decided last month or the month before to spend over a million dollars and buy some industrial property, and I think if we're going to go on with that, which we did, I think we need to have everything in-house, and I think that's what really got going. The other thing is, is we've been operating since, I don't know the exact year, but probably somewhere in the area, 2009 went out an assistant city manager. And I felt that it's also a possibility of using that position and this position combined to do both functions. I believe there's enough time and for that position to do both functions. How much, we won't know right off the bat. Might take us a year to get our feet wet, to find out really how much effort is put into economic development, how much is going to be in the city manager. But our goal is to put every effort into economic development, because this is what's the best for the city. Anyway, that's where I'm coming from, and that's why I brought it up. I think now's the time to make the decision and go forward, so my two cents.
And I think, Mr. Chair, just the other thing that we talked about back then too was succession planning, having someone in place that should Brian make the decision to leave, that we have somebody who's got experience in all city departments, not necessarily a new city manager, but at least has a lot of experience overseeing the various different departments within the city. So that was also part of our discussion as well.
Correct.
I think another part of our discussion is also for our community development, you know, coordinator, you know, the job shadow, and, you know, right now, everything has to come and work with Dave Schnoverick and with Brian. The city staff already does it. And by bringing someone in place, you know, we can, you know, Dave's not going to be working forever, he'll retire some year.
What?
You know. Brian will retire sometime, but we need to get somebody, you know, like we discussed three years back, you know, for succession planning for our city. So, and with making the significant purchase here for the future, I think we can do it. You know, I see a job description that you wrote out, Brian. You've worked with Personnel Committee on the job description or...
Yeah, this was just, this was just prepared by staff, just as a general idea. The Personnel Committee did review, at least have it available to look at. I suspect there'll be more work that needs to be done on that. It's just a draft. It's just, I felt it was important enough that you have something, at least to talk about.
We represented the draft same time you were. So just...
Yeah.
I mean, it's there to be talked about, worked on, whatever.
Now, there was discussion at that time as well about the retail development. I'm assuming that's gotten pulled, because wasn't that going to be part of this request as well or discussion? I don't see that...
I think that's a separate entity.
Yeah, I think we'll discuss that in the future. This one, I, the reason I called the city manager and asked him to put it on the agenda is I think this is something that if we're going to do it, we make the decision now, because we have to come up with a job description, we have to go out and advertise, and we don't want to start this at the first of the year. If we do, we're going to be wasting a lot of time. I need to, I think we need to get somebody on board, come first of the year, go forward. And without making a decision, we can't do it.
We also got to look at the budget also.
Right.
You know, and we'll be working on the budget here in the upcoming months, so...
More discussion? Name and address for the record, please.
Jeff Dietrich, 800 South Garden. I'm also served as President of New Ulm Economic Development Corporation. First off, thanks for some of the councilors that were able to meet with us one-on-one. A couple of board members are here. We met with you guys to discuss the funding of, or continued funding of the NU EDC. You know, I don't doubt the need for an assistant city manager or the transition, anything like that. Our concern is that economic development may slip by lack of funding for the NU EDC. Some of you have received the two-page document, actually, three pages of the summary of operations. If you have not, it's in your email. I emailed it to you this afternoon, just to, you know, showing what we've accomplished since 1996, I guess, as far as, we've always thought that we've worked well hand-in-hand with the city, and if it's not broke, don't fix it. But if you consider it is broke, let us know, and we can, you know, make changes to our organization. We kind of, this came to us rather short notice in July, so we've been scrambling on what to do. How do we convince the councilors that we, you know, for 50,000 or 100,000, whichever you look at, you're really getting a bang for your buck? On the second page, our director has put together a list of things that he's worked on in the last few years. He's been here since 1996. Top of the list, AMPI, when they had the fire, they considered quitting producing butter and leaving town. He was instrumental, our group was instrumental in keeping them here. It's a $12 million payroll. You look at, okay, they're new to town because of NU EDC, a $5 million payroll. It just goes on and on and on. Beacon, another $5 million. So I think for 50,000, you guys are getting a hell of a deal. So as far as economic development goes, that's our concern, is that the assistant city manager is going to be very busy with taking over the city manager's position and whomever's position, and economic development will suffer. We've got Brian Toll, who goes out and he makes cold calls to our current businesses. What do you need? How can we help you? He works with all the, you know, Region Nine, anybody else who's even considering coming to New Ulm. He puts packages together. If you go and take a look on the third page, he's currently working with Windings. Windings is being coordinated by Hutchinson and North Main Cane to come, reside in their cities. So he's working on that, trying to keep them here in New Ulm. So again, from the NU EDC as president, I'm just here to say, please reconsider that budget item. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like Barrett?
Good afternoon, City Council. President Schmitz, wasn't planning on speaking, but since the opportunity has availed itself...
Raise your hand.
I know, I did. Yes, I know. And I'm speaking on behalf of the New Ulm Area Chamber of Commerce, or New Ulm Area Chamber of Commerce advocating for our member, New Ulm Economic Development Corporation. And they are also our partner in economic development as the city is in this community. You know, I agree with Jeff, the, really appreciate Brian Grammets coming to us the second day after the conversation came up at your meeting. I think it took some of us by a lot of surprise and of what the city's council is talking about. And on one hand, you have to know, I love action. I like when there's a good idea, people moving on it quickly, and so I appreciate also the initiative that that shows. I also appreciate, Brian, this got to be kind of hard to have you think about succession planning, you're sitting in the room, but I appreciate that the city is forward-thinking in that way. We've just watched two succession plans happen in New Ulm, the business community, that have gone really well. Wombrex being picked up, or the building being purchased by Christina Schwab with a whole new store, but obviously reaping the benefits of the hours and years of Wombrex influence in this community. And then just what was mentioned before, the Bed and Breakfast, Deutsche Strasse, getting purchased, I believe sight unseen. So that's pretty exciting. But we've watched two really great experiences of succession planning, which will benefit our community for years. My concern today with the proposal and with the push to decide this quicker is that we don't, I don't know the exact year that the city started contributing funds to the NU EDC, but it's been at least for 20 years. And so the NU EDC has received supplemental funding from the city to provide these economic development services for our community. And I feel like what's being proposed is a really big shift in how those services are being put out. And that, the NU EDC has been governed or led by a group of volunteers from the, from the business community. And so there's a ton of people who have invested a lot of hours in that organization, a lot of their time, resources, and things like that. And I think this conversation is so much bigger than just this shift. And I feel like, you know, we've had, in eight weeks, we're making a really big decision about how economic development services are delivered for this community. And I don't think that we have had the, enough conversation with all of the people that are invested in economic development. So my suggestion would be, would be to table today and convene city, chamber, EDC, and, you know, put a group together just to talk it through. I appreciate the city taking the initiative. I love the forward-thinking, but I want you to be supported and all of us moving together in doing this, instead of feeling like the city's just taking it over and doing it. It's too important for that decision just to be made at this level, in my opinion. Does anyone have any question, questions for me?
I know because of the news came out, you think it's something that was just discussed lately. Like I made a comment earlier, this is a conversation that Brian and I have had for the last five, six years. It's something that we've been looking at, talked about, went back and checked what other cities are doing. The setup we have today with the economic corporation is rare. We are probably the only city that has such a thing. Most cities, or all cities, I would say, are governed, or operated underneath the city as far as economic development. I'm not saying that a bad job has been done or anything, but like I said, the thing that really triggered me is when we decided to spend that money and buy that property. We have to get going and get on with the way other government cities are run. It just, it needs to be done. And it wasn't something that just jumped out and says, okay, we're going to try something different. We have talked about it. Spent a lot of time talking about it. Spent a lot of time talking about it.
And President Schmitz, I believe that. And I, and I think everyone at the table up there and everybody in this room is really, has the heart in the right place that we want to see New Ulm grow and we want to see services being delivered in an efficient manner. I just would like the opportunity for a group of people to get together that are all invested in economic development and sit down together. I mean, we've been trying to do, I know the board for the NU EDC has really tried to meet with city councilors individually, and that is great, but I think there is an opportunity to get people around the table who are all invested in that and come together and say, this is our plan for the future for economic development, and then, and work it out at that table so that you can feel more supported about this move. I know it's not a new thing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
One question I've got, maybe Mr. Dietrich can answer it after President Schmitz brought it up, is about, I don't know if the council gets reported to or not, but where's the position and like the funding held accountable to? Is it just your board when it meets or the functions going on? So in the past, the city's never received any of that.
Okay. Well, age number sits in our meetings. So it is rough for the city that.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd just like to add, you know, I mean, Brian's, you know, do you have a succession plan in place for the NU Economic Development Corporation? A plan, you know, a plan B, you know, if something happens, you know, on that aspect. And, you know, I think, you know, what Audra's saying, you know, and discussing about meeting, you know, I think, you know, we could get our decision tonight and we could meet with them and share some ideas to write a job description for the future, and then we could possibly rate that and, you know, try it. And it's a learning curve. It's going to be with the city.
I agree partially with what you say. I think, I'm still stuck on my way, I guess. My, my idea is to make a decision tonight. I still think we need to, after we make the decision, meet with Economic Development Corporation and sit down and talk about it after the fact and say, this is what we're going to do so they have an idea of what's happening too. Not, but if we're going to just all sit together, I know what's going to come out of it or what they're going to try to do and maybe change their minds, and I guess I'm not ready to change their mind. You're not going to change it. My vote's going to be this way regardless of how much we talk. I think we need to do it, and we need to do it now. We can keep putting it off, but sometimes you have to make a decision and go forward.
I think we also need to look at what other cities have all done. You know, we've got a rare situation here and, you know, we're putting significant money into it, and I guess the initiative that the, you know, they've done, I mean, they've had twenty-one years here. Could they come to the city every year for the last twenty-one years and say, we need an extra hundred thousand, so you got to rein a day fund to purchase land? You know, I'm not seeing that type of thinking, I guess, you know, for, you know, coming to us for more money.
One of the comments, I'm just going to make a little comment, and I've been hearing it for as long as I've been the mayor. Our economic development is, is working very, very hard. But Brian, I think you'll agree with me, we've got one deficit that's very hard to overcome. We lost the big hog plant, or whatever it was, packing plant. I think the letter came from you that said they decided to move next to the interstate. This is something that we have, have been fighting, economic development, the city has been fighting for longer than, well, sixty years, to get a four-lane highway here to help out with getting people to live here, work here. So, I, I have, do not have the solution for getting the highway here. I've tried every which way I can with our representatives and all I get is, well, it should go all the way to Sioux Falls. I'm not disagreeing with that, but first let's get it from thirty-five W to New Ulm. That's all.
Mr. President, I, I, I see the benefit of having it in-house, and I see that's, most cities have that position in-house. And so I understand that shift maybe should be done. My concern comes when we try to split this position. And I, I think that economic development in our size community might be more than just a halftime position. And I guess that's my concern when we're going to be doing this. Not so much bringing it in-house, but splitting that position and making sure that position is dedicated enough time to get the job done in economic development and not get lost. So...
I guess I agree with what you're saying. And we haven't determined that it's going to be exactly a fifty-fifty split halftime. I, like comment I made earlier, I think we're going to put all our emphasis in economic development, and any spare time or whatever that's left over would be as the city manager, it's going to be a dual position. But I, we, economic development is number one thing, but...
Okay. Well, and that's, when you look at the description that was put out, it says assistant city manager.
Right.
Not even in the title, economic development and stuff. So, you know, I want to make sure that that's out there from the start, is that our main focus here is economic development, not assistant city manager, that if we're going to take this on, we want to make sure we allot enough time for that.
And I, I think, you know, we have to make a decision before a job description to really know what we're going to have in that job description. I mean, it don't pay to spend a lot of time to develop a job description, we have no intention of doing it, on the other hand, so...
So my question then is, is if, okay, say we decide that we're going to take over this position, do we have to take over it January first, or can we take it over July first?
No, really whenever we want it.
And give it, give funding for half a year, or, you know, I, I know you might not like that, but I, I'm just thinking that to make this transition, I don't know, it's just a thought. It's like, it does seem a little rushed, but I understand where we want to head. I understand where we want to go.
My two cents on, on some of this is that, this is a huge decision, it's a hundred thousand dollar decision, and maybe even much larger than that when you look at the final outcome of this. Having a meeting to hear from the New Ulm Economic Develop Corporation isn't, I don't think it's wrong. I think that there's, can we gain something from that? I, this is a big issue, and if we're going to talk about the retail piece, where does that fit? Does that, is that way too much to expect for this particular position? Yes, I think we need to move forward, but I want to make sure we make a decision that's good for our city and good for the future of our city and good for economic development and succession planning. And I'm, I don't see anything wrong with having a meeting with all of us and the New Ulm Economic Development Corporation, just talk some of this out, and not only talk about why maybe it should stay where it's at, but also if it did change, what would that look like, both to their corporation and to us? And then come back and make the final decision after that. Knowledge is power, knowledge is, you make good information there. I just hope that we're not forgetting something here, and I haven't seen what Jeff just sent out this afternoon. I didn't, I didn't open my afternoon email, so I don't have any clue what that information is, so, other than what he told us. But I don't think I'm ready to make that decision tonight. But that's me.
Any more discussion?
We got Mary.
Go ahead.
Standing in the wings here, Mary Ellen Dillmeyer, nine sixteen South Jefferson. And I'm really pleased with the discussion and the exchange that I'm hearing taking place. It indicates that you are being reflective and thoughtful on it, and I'm glad that you've had five or six years to think about it and talk to Brian Gromit's about it. I heard about this two weeks ago. And I started working at the Chamber of Commerce office twelve years after New Ulm Industries was formed. In that time, and in the many years since, up to the time we hired a full-time person because the job grew to that, we've always had a strong relationship with both the city and the chamber. It's been a wonderful alliance over all these years. I get choked up thinking about it. One of, one of the things that bothers me is when I look at the job description right now that's proposed, two-thirds of it is city job, a lot of it personnel. And anyone who's managed people knows that that takes a lot of time. So I'm concerned again that things will come along and economic development will probably slide a bit. Over the years with the private citizens who invested thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars into buying property that ultimately fit Kraft Foods, Three M, and any number of other industrial parks in this community, the NU EDC has purchased and worked with other property owners, much as it would continue to do with the city as a property owner. And so I really think that working relationship could continue, but at the very least, I would appreciate it if it were tabled and the stakeholders involved talked about it and planned it. That's my two cents.
Thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead, Brian.
Point of investigation, Rantall fifteen Little Drive. None of the money that we've received from the city has gone into our budget reserve, zero, not one dollar. We've, we've made that money on the sale of buildings and land. And in fact, we operate a negative budget with your funding that you have given us over the years of approximately thirty thousand a year. So we're actually pulling money out of our reserve to fund our budget.
Thank you.
Julie Baumgartner, five thirty-two West Ridge Road in Cortland. I'm also, I've served on the NU EDC for about nine years. I can really appreciate the city staff, Dave as our liaison, Brian here, do a great job when we have projects that we need to get done. They're very responsive. What I think, and especially when I looked at that job description, I understand that was preliminary, but NU EDC, being an economic developer, is a full-time job. Brian spends a good portion of his time out calling on our industries, both prospects and existing businesses, because if we're not doing that on a very proactive basis, we're really at risk of losing those businesses. So, if you're considering this, bringing this in-house, I think you have to say, this is a full-time position. Community of our size needs a full-time economic developer. I believe in the partnership. I think you get a great bang for your buck, and we're here to work with the city and to make things happen here.
Thank you. Any others? Brian?
Yeah, Mr. President, the only question I guess I would have is, is maybe to Mr. Dietrich, and that would be, should the Public Utility Commission make a decision, you know, based on their information that they are unable to fund their fifty thousand dollars for whatever reason, which is, you know, kind of the, the direction that I was hearing the Assistant City Attorney talk? What does that do to your operation when instead of receiving a hundred thousand, you only receive fifty thousand?
I don't have an answer for that, I guess. We don't, we haven't discussed what we would do if we got zero funding or if we got partial funding. Obviously, we have to make a decision by the end of the year, so I don't know what the answer to that is. It's hard to say what we would do, whether we would dip into reserves even further to retain Brian for another year, six months, I don't know. It's hard to say what we would do. But, you know, I guess we'll have to cross that bridge, whatever decision you guys make. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody have any ideas of where we want to go? I know where I stand, that's all I know, so...
I guess I know where I stand, so I'm going to offer a motion to eliminate the funding for twenty eighteen for the New Ulm Economic Development and instruct the city manager to prepare an updated job description for assistant city manager position and to initiate the selection process to fill the position shortly after January one, twenty eighteen.
Do we have a second? I'll second it. Any more discussion?
So, I guess I, I thought we might have just a little bit more collaboration. I guess I, I don't argue bringing it in, in-house, but I, I kind of wish there would have been maybe more collaboration and just talking it out.
Well, I think, the decision we're making is to bring it in-house, just like you're saying, and we can do the talking afterwards. We can, we can talk forever, we need to make a decision, and then we get together with the economic corporation and let them know that we're there to work with them, just like we have. But we have Dave in-house, we have everything else, we've been doing it here. Sorry to say it. Take a step and go forward. That's my comment. Anybody else? No more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Both or no?
No.
No.
Finance Director, please call the roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
No.
Counselor Christian?
No.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item number six A, consider accepting the list of claims and paid, approved the list of claims to be paid. Claims paid in amount of three million, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and, no, three million, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars, or eighty-five thousand, there we go, and thirty-one dollars and sixty cents in approval list of claims paid in amount of one million, two hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars and forty cents.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any more discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All no? Motion carries. But no more business, meeting adjourned.